It's 6:56, July 31st, and we are having a work session. Present are the three selectmen, Josh, Mike, Jeff, Michelle, our town clerk. We also have a couple of people, guests here. Josh Moore from Hamlin Associates, Brady Armstrong as a citizen.
All right. We have us a meeting.
Okay, so the town voted tonight unanimously to pay you for the revaluation of the town. I have that check ready for you, and I'll get the other check for the one that got lost in the mail.
Okay.
So that will be ready tomorrow morning when you get in.
Okay.
Whatever time you want to stop down to the office, I'll get that for you.
My concerns, Josh. As a select board, we received the letter that you sent us. I guess this is from us to you. I think as a board, we want to retain you for the future, and we want to... I think we want to try to, as a new board, new government, new everything in our town, assure you that you will be paid for your services in a timely fashion. What happened before, it was kind of a mess. People resigned, there was things undone, there were things that were missed in our town meeting, and those are not excuses. This is us trying to pick up the pieces from that and move on.
Right.
What do you guys think?
My only concern is, okay, the contract price. 2016, you know, my contract price was 15,700. 2023, well, 2021, it went down to 14,000, and we tried to get it back up to 14,500 with a little bit of bought from the selectmen at 14,500. Right now, you guys, it's paying me less than any other town I work with.
So let me ask you this question. What was the process that made that happen? How did you go from here to here?
They put it out to bid in 2020, 19, they put it out to bid.
Mm-hmm.
They couldn't get anybody to bid any less than I did.
Mm-hmm.
So it was, come to me, with a couple of the selectmen come to me and said, hey, we need you to drop the price, we're trying to help out the town, and I did. Kind of my bad, I shouldn't have, but I did.
Mm-hmm.
But there's been no increase since, you know?
Mm-hmm.
That was the understanding I had from the other selectmen, that we were going to work back up towards that.
Mm-hmm.
You know, a 3% increase from 15,600 right now would be close to $19,000 for a contract.
This contract every year?
It's out.
You do a contract every year?
Yes.
Every year?
Yes. A lot of my towns do three-year contracts, but this town never opted for that.
You could do it, you'd have to put it on your warrant and just say, we'd like to do a three-year contract.
Right.
Just put an article on there.
Do you know what the average, the other towns are paying, towns this size, or about?
Right now, we're doing, what, $18 a parcel? So it depends on how many parcels.
It varies. Each town is different, so we can't really say...
So it's per parcel, not per capita or...
Right.
Right, and it varies on the town, what we do.
Yeah, I mean, I think I got, well, things vary, I think they pay more per parcel, but they've got the big windmills up there, which took a lot of time in court, a lot of, you know, so I had to charge them more money.
Right.
But generally speaking, you know, I try to get $18 a parcel.
Mm-hmm.
You up to 1,200 parcels?
It's a parcel.
Yeah. So at 19, we're still giving the ideal, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, you guys are...
The other biggest thing is, the town always wanted to go full version trio. Full version trio and assessing for me needs more work. Now you need to get me a computer in your office, I need to take time out of my office, spend time in your office to do all the data entry. Right now, we're able to do it through...
Oh, we're still doing that?
Right. It's a short maintenance, we can get in there with TeamViewer and do the data entries, so we ain't got to be in your office to do the data entry.
Right.
Full version's a whole different story. Costs you more money, costs me more time to do the data entry. I got my own program. I got my own property records cards, all based on the state manual. You know, it's so much easier for me to produce them that way, give you guys the values you put them in. I mean, there's other ways that you can do it. I mean, if you have clerks in the office that want to do all the data entry, if you get full version for you, that's fine, too. That would save you a little bit if you got full version. But generally speaking, full version needs more work for me. That's one of the reasons why, when we talked about it before with the other selectmen, I kind of talked them out of it. That was kind of my fault, probably, but...
Go falls.
You know, that's an extra $4,000 a year for you guys, for what? To produce a property record.
Just for the programming, for the full version.
For the extra programming, for the full version.
Okay, so the program that we have right now, Sequel, is going away. Next year, we've been told that we really need to move to the web to be able to function any part of our trio. What does that, in alone, by itself, what does that do to you?
Nothing.
Nothing? Will it make it easier so Kara doesn't have to call and say, is Sam there?
No, she's still going to have to call and get in there.
And their web base is, well, that's just a whole nother discussion.
I do not like their web base program. I've had, I've got three towns right now that's working with web base. First town has, I committed, committed another town's information. Everything's on the web, so when you start pulling the information from here to bring it to you, you better hope you got the right information. They have gotten better with that over a couple of years, because the first town was three years ago now that committed a web, so this has been an ongoing process. I don't think you'll have so much trouble with it as a short version.
Okay.
However, I haven't worked with a full version a lot. I tried to stay away from the town to do the full version because...
It's a lot.
It's a lot.
I did full version in Guilford, and it is a lot.
Yeah.
Your system seems to work very well. I mean, I've been almost a whole year with this. Kara calls, we hook her up, she does her thing over there. So, but the only thing is, that server, all our computers are getting very old, they're coming outdated, so they're telling us that it's this hard drive, we hope it doesn't crash because it has everything on it. So moving forward, hopefully, we can do the web, and it'll make it a little easier. I was hoping it was going to be easier for you guys, but...
Not any easier, but not any harder, really.
Okay, so it's really not going to have a whole lot of...
The web is just the engine that runs it. Sequel is the engine that runs the trio program. That's all they are, not the actual program.
And the thing is with that is, like, when your web's down, you're down.
You don't have trio.
You don't have it.
Oh.
And it happens.
It happens, it happens now in my office, and I don't have a web.
Yeah.
But, so that's the biggest thing. I mean, you guys really didn't budget. You budgeted the same for this year, but my contract is past years, so that's going to be a big...
Question, though, why are we requesting? I mean, I've always had contractors come to me, you know, especially if I've used them more over and over and over, and you bring it to them and say, well, this is the contract, you know, can we sit down, set up a meeting, talk to the board, talk about the contract? I've never been, I've never had it go the other way.
You don't have to request a contract. I never put one in this year, nobody asked. I didn't put one in because the, I mean, I look at your town reports, you guys voted to raise $14,000 to pay me. I'm not going to do it $14,000 this year. Can't do it. I've got other towns that are asking me to do it for more, you know? Right now, I'm still turning towns in my head because I'm too busy.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm not doing it for the $14,000, I can't, and make money and pay, you know, workman's comp's gone up, insurance has gone up, million-dollar liabilities, what I have to have for these towns, that's gone up, you know, and I did, like I said, back, I got paid more back in 2016 than I am in 2024. I shouldn't have to ask for a raise, I shouldn't have to ask for town meeting for you guys to raise more money for assessing. I mean, that should be common sense. Any contracts that you guys do over the years, you add a 3% increase. That's how I treat my contracts that come in that I have to pay in my business. I expect that increase every year. If I don't, good, then I've saved the money.
Mm-hmm.
You know, but right now, as the town of Sangerville, you guys have raised $14,000 to pay me.
But that's not true. I mean, that's what they put on that line, but that's just a bucket of money. That's the general administrative line, and so if you come with a contract and say, I need $17,000, they'd have to decide whether or not to approve that, but they'd have to take it out of that administrative bucket, and you're going to be doing another town meeting because your administrative bucket got cut.
Exactly.
So...
This is the time to address it.
Yeah, but it's not set in stone, don't think that you can't.
I didn't think it would be set in stone, but honestly, over this rebound money, I mean, that was voted on in 2023.
When did that bill come in?
The contract was signed last year.
Right, I know. And we approved the money, and it was, it was raised, and, but then the bill didn't come in until May?
May 31st, I sent it.
Because the contract says...
And we were already in freefall.
Contract says I get paid when you commit. Every year, June...
We knew you'd commit in June, so I sent it, so it would be set up to be paid in June.
You know, so I don't know exactly how this is working, but it doesn't seem to work like it should. I don't know what's broken in the system, that's beyond me, that's for you guys to find out. However, now that that's already in the budget...
You need a town manager. You're going to be asking for money, so I wouldn't... I'd take Josh. Draw us up a multi-year contract.
I do.
And take that to your...
I agree with that.
Me as well. That's if you're willing to stay on.
I need to talk about it, and we need to not do August to August.
Right, August to August is a...
It's not a good...
It's always been January to December.
Mm-hmm.
That makes sense.
That's how contracts usually run.
Mm-hmm.
Again, the board wanted to change it to August, so really, you know, I got from January to August, the first time they changed it, I worked for the town and didn't get a So I think, you know, I've given the town quite a bit.
Mm-hmm.
So really, it, do you guys think you can come up with the money to begin with? You know, I don't want to give you guys a contract and have you sign it if you can't even...
Well, now the question goes back to, you're saying that we can add money on top of what we originally proposed, but...
What did you commit? What did you use for figures?
We started out with $338,000 and something.
Right, but when Josh brings you that worksheet, you...
No, 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 back to...
I don't, not what you budget, but what you committed.
Okay, I can't tell you that without the books.
Okay, we'll think of that, we'll think about that one, but you have a chance to go back. We have fund balance. You aren't doing any paving, you aren't doing a lot of roadwork this year because we're a mess, so there is plenty of fund balance to get this straightened out. But you have to get it through a town meeting, I don't foresee anybody...
So I think, I think the only way to fix that is to go and have a separate article
Correct.
To address just assessing, because when we go to the article...
Well, yes, because if he gives you a three-year contract, it's going to be separate.
Right.
Or whatever, I'm pushing here.
Right.
I apologize. I'm not even in charge here, I'm, but I'm saying, you know, yeah, we could separate article.
Okay. Because when we go to special town meeting, we have to go back and see if the town will vote to go back to our original proposed total for general government. That's the one they slashed, which is where they are.
Correct, but we don't have to go back to that original amount.
I thought you did, because what was proposed in the original article, they slashed it down to 279.
Correct.
So my understanding is we have to actually go back and go back to the original proposed figure, because that was proposed in the first article.
Don't believe so. All you have to do is make your new proposal, and you say you don't want to do a second taxation, so you have to appropriate it and not raise it.
Right, and that will come out of general fund.
General fund, yes.
Which isn't a lot left in general fund.
No, because taxes were delayed and you haven't had your tax money coming in, so by the end of August, you'll have most of your money for the year.
So this is something you guys need to figure out, you know, before you enter the contract, I feel. The other thing is, I got towns that, I did a rebound for this year that paid me without even putting in front of a town meeting, by the town vote, nothing. So I don't understand why...
That I don't know about that, I have no idea.
I don't understand why it was an issue to begin with.
I don't know.
Especially when it was already put to vote in '23 and passed.
Right, I think the only thing you have to do is appropriate it, because it rolls back into the general fund, and you just have to, you have to be able to track it, and so you just reappropriate it. You have to pay it, as far as I'm concerned. You made, you made the contract, you owe it, it's yours. I don't know what, I know in May, everything fell apart, and there was nobody to sign anything, nobody to, you know, and they have been running with very little cash flow because of the CD.
Because of the CD, we've been three weeks without paychecks, we couldn't pay warrants out of those.
Well, you didn't have anybody to sign, yeah, you didn't have anybody...
We were in a mess.
Right.
We couldn't make decisions, we didn't have a full quorum, I mean, I mean, you had two girls in the office.
We received a check in June for June payment, so somebody signed something.
But on July 3rd, on July 3rd, we lost two board members, and that stopped everything right there.
Right. That check that you received, I was part of the old board.
Right.
Before we received their resignations.
Which, which I understand, yeah. However, in my mind, that, this was supposed to be paid June 1st. That should have been on the warrant way back, in June, same time I got my June payment. This should have been on the June for the selectmen to sign, that you had selectmen at that time to sign.
Well, that's because they left it off the warrant.
That's correct.
So did we commit it in June?
I'm interested to see what you actually committed. I think it was June 28th, wasn't it? Yeah, yeah, but what did you, what numbers did you, did you, did you commit what was proposed, or did you commit what actually passed? I think we've committed what was passed. You should have.
See, that, I'm not sure, because...
We went back and forth.
I don't, I don't read your budget numbers. I mean, they come from the guys.
No, I would just call you and say, Josh.
Right. I didn't write town meetings, I don't know what was passed.
I'm running this through my head, am I thinking correctly?
So, and that's why I said, at the meeting you was at, when we were talking about commitment, I said, you selectmen signed this commitment, you are responsible for it.
And they never did.
Yeah. However, there's a reason why they didn't. I don't know that, you know what I mean, but I would be awful nervous about signing that commitment when the two that was there full-time wouldn't. But you guys are responsible for them numbers.
Yeah.
And now you guys signed them afterwards, you're ultimately responsible for that commitment.
That's correct.
That's what I would be really scared of, and that's why I mentioned it right in the public meeting, because I said, this is all good, you know, you guys need to, need to know. You know, and when we did the budget that year, last year, yeah, we went back and forth like five different times, which number do I use? Finally, I picked one and we went with it, and you agreed that was the right one. You know, that's, that's not a good way to do it, in my mind, you know, and I, if you don't know your numbers, you shouldn't commit. You know? But put that aside, I mean, you guys really got to see if you can come up with the money before we even think about another contract, because if it's not there, I'm probably not going to do a contract.
And that's our question.
I'm not going to play this again.
That is our question to you, once we are through this, and we can sign a contract, are you interested in continuing for the town of Sangerville?
It'd be interesting continuing.
Under contract.
The contract's going to be a lot more money, unfortunately.
And it's got to be January to December, is that reasonable?
I would like it that, that would be so much better. When, you should match it in your physical year. What is it?
January to December.
January to December. I mean, that way, when you vote on it, it's budgeted for that year, there's no six months one, six months the other, like the school budget, you know?
Yeah, that's a pain.
I don't know why the old selectmen wanted to change. Other than that year, they were looking for another assessor, and they were really going to put me out of the curve.
And they tried, they tried to do it themselves, too, didn't they?
Yeah, they found that they couldn't do it. So, and then I had six, eight, well, eight months of work to get caught up, and six months before you commit, and we did it.
You did.
You know what I mean?
You did.
That's what we did. So that's, you know, I would like to, I'd like to know that we get the money there before we sign contracts again, because it shouldn't be an issue.
No, it shouldn't.
Really shouldn't.
So in the short term, because we're going to have abatements, probably...
I have some, yep, he's giving me abatements.
I've done...
Are we allowed to do something short term? Can we do something short term until we figure this, you know?
You mean like monthly?
Yes, as of August 1st, you're done.
Contract ends today, correct?
So any new abatements that come after...
Today, right.
Tomorrow, you're, you don't take.
Correct. Correct.
So that's kind of like an emergency situation, correct?
Mm-hmm.
That's up to what you guys can do as a board, you're going to have to decide that.
Right, but I, what I guess what I'm asking you is, are you willing to do something for a month or two? I mean, we're looking at what, August 17th?
August 17th is when we want to go to another, because we couldn't do it the 3rd, not enough time, the 10th, we're tied up, so the 17th was the next opening that the board, we could go to the public.
Right.
And get this taken care of. So we'll be, we can crunch numbers, like I can, we can work on getting the figures pulled together and see where we stand, but would you be willing to go out until we get past town meeting, so that we can try to put another budget together for you for the next year?
Yeah, we're going to have to figure out an amount, you know, but...
I mean, to me, you're going to tell us what that amount is.
Yeah.
I mean, you're going to pay.
Make a decision.
It shouldn't be a non-negotiating thing.
Right.
Right.
It shouldn't be like it is.
I agree.
Whether you want it monthly, whether you want it two payments in a year, six months, that's your contract.
We did it monthly before, because that's what the town wanted.
Yep, whatever, whatever works for you.
I mean, I'd like monthly, you know, it's going to be, take 20,000 divided by 12, that's what it's going to cost a month.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you guys are going to have to be willing to pay me that until we come up with a contract.
I don't see anything.
I don't know if you can.
I don't see...
Well, I think...
Can you pull the administrative numbers for me?
We can't make a decision on that tonight.
Can I come in and grab a copy of trios? Your admin, general admin numbers.
How long does abatements keep coming in? When do those fizzler...
They can legally apply for six months after committing.
Six months.
185 days.
Yeah, as I say, you said it's sometime in the summer.
Yes.
I cut off.
If it's something really bad, the selectmen can go up to three years, but that's at their discretion. Once it gets past that 185 days, you, you guys are technically the ones that go to accounting commissioners and fight that abatement. I've never let the town go without my representation, but that's completely up to you guys. If we're contracted and somebody takes us accounting commissions, then I go. With you guys, if you want to go with me, I can't tell you now, because it looks better to have a selectman there for sure.
Completely fixed.
But, yeah.
And they haven't seen us.
So that's, that's kind of what we're looking at.
Let me see if I've got this clear. We take 20,000 divided by 12, that's, my brain isn't too fast. So that's 1,666 per month.
Yep.
If you broke it down monthly. What I'm getting from you is at a payment of $1,666 a month, you will continue to represent us outside of contract to do our abatements.
Yep. The abatements, and, you know, whatever's needed.
Right.
Yep.
Basically, a non-contracted, same service you've been providing.
Yep, and then we'll figure out what to do with the contract from there. And that would put us back on the January to December schedule.
Can't we take it out of overlay? You could, you had to, because we have, 22,000 is in the budget for the discount. We have 32,000 something for overlay. Well, that'll, a lot of that will be eaten up in your 2% discount.
No, because we, our overlay this year was 52,000 something.
Well, then you've got 30,000 or 1,000 to work with. So, plus you also have your, what do they call it, not overlay, but your 15,000 in case you go over.
Right, yep. For the regular account.
Contingency, right, contingency, so you do have money there.
We've not allocated that for anything else.
You can't allocate it, but you can say, this is an emergency, this is...
We haven't spent it yet.
Right.
Just so I can grasp, this is a question for you and you at the same time. So if we do monthly, that, you said that gets us to the first of the year, January, but we haven't approved...
That's right.
That, so do we have to go monthly for the next year and a half, because we're going to approve the contract? I may be completely confused here, but I just want to make sure that we're not going to get caught later on.
Right. The way I look at it is, you guys have budgeted so much this year already, 14,000.
So you only need...
So you wouldn't need the full...
You'd only need the other six, 7,000, say 7,000.
Right, right. And if your calendar year runs from January to December, if you do monthly until January, then we visit a contract and get back onto the January, December, that would be a whole new budget year, from what I understand.
It would put us right on the schedule that you want to be on.
And it would put you guys on a better schedule for voting money for town meeting.
But we wouldn't get approval for next year's schedule until town meeting.
We, we would be able to put an article, correct me, we'd be able to put an article on the August 17th warrant to increase or pay more from now until the end of our year. Right?
And then to pay all necessary expenses from January to whenever you have your town meeting, which would be necessary.
That was going to be my next question, is that, boy, how do we, I mean, yep.
You have to have a successor, so, so it's necessary, you got to be...
Correct. I would think that would work better for the, I mean, that's why most towns do the same, actually, the physical year, some of them, oh, you know, February to January. I think you guys have calendar year, so it would work better if your contracts, in my mind, go from January to December.
Well, and hopefully, our town meeting won't be in May, it'll be in March, which is, eight March.
Our town meeting will be in March.
Yeah, so I think...
I will say, we've had a lot of abatements come through, I think we've only given out eight, nine abatements.
Yeah.
I don't even know.[1733.37]
A lot of people, a lot of people are understanding when they at least talk to us, you know?
And I don't think the abatements, I don't even know that we've had that many that are because of the value, like...
It was something...
It was something else that needed fixing, that normally happens anyways.
Right. I've seen some of that, in the ones that you've done.
Yeah.
There's always a few.
There really hasn't been, as far as value goes, which they might not be too happy, but it is one of these.
Yeah, just they want to vent.
Right now, I'm sitting on two people that wouldn't even call me back, you know? I've tried for a week now, left plenty of messages, so... One of them, we just did a, a denial for, just because he wouldn't call me back. I was like, okay, we're just gonna deny it?
And I had one call back, she called back today, I explained it to her, and I'm like, all day long. Like, I'll come out, I'll recome out, but I'm telling you, all day long. And she was like...
I know, and I wouldn't sell it for that.
I know. She just, and I get it, because taxes are there. People, I mean, I, I feel for everybody. I mean, we're dealing with it, you know, and... She's like, I've never complained, it's just I can't, I'm like, I know, I hear it from so many people.
I think swinging, prices going down a lot for real estate? I'm afraid of that.
They should be, because if you watch the market, everything is, everybody's houses are down 20,000, down 20,000. It ain't moving like they were six months ago.
The state's two years behind.
Yeah, but if you look at what is going down, it's all properties that are having a hard time being financed.
Right.
Like a mobile home going for 125 with an acre, not many people can go to a bank and get a loan for that mobile home for that. It has to be cash sale. Them cash sales people, I spent their money, now we're looking at bank financing properties. And they're not financing these older houses. And that's what you're seeing going down. Anything 200,000 and up seems to be going quick still. Because they can get the financing.
And it's going for the price that they want. It's gone down a little, but nothing that's gonna...
And every, you know, everybody needs to remember that this is going off a two-year period. So right now, we're still looking at sales that happened in 2022. So the state's always two years behind. So even if it dropped right off the, flat on its nose right this year, we wouldn't be able to bring everybody's values down until 2026.
Yep.
Because their sales are two years behind. And if you didn't do nothing, we would've been two years even further behind before we could fix it. You know, so it's, it's a game we're playing to get everybody's valued homesteads for them. You know, that's the biggest thing. When you look at somebody and say, your homestead's 25,000, we're only gonna give you 20 because the valuation of our town is low. You don't get the reimbursement money, tree growth, homesteads. You know, this town was losing more than $30,000 because they weren't at 100% in state refunded money.
Where are we? 103? 103? As long as we stay within 10%, right?
Right. Then you're all set. But, yeah, I mean, if you wanna do a month-by-month thing with no contract until the 1st, if you're willing to do that price...
And then we'll see how it goes.
Yeah.
Can you get us something in writing?
Yep.
Right, we would, do we need it in writing?
I would say yes.
Tomorrow, yeah.
Yeah, we'll get you something in writing. She's the one that does all the contracts.
You'd see it if you select.
And to be clear, we're 1,666 a month.
Yep.
Yep.
That's 20,000 divided by 12.
Big money compared to what you was paying before. I think it was 13 or something, right?
12.
It's not big money, but with the, you know, McDonald's right now is paying people $20 an hour, if I can't compete with that, then...
Give everybody who's...
I hear you. Go into McDonald's, I'm gonna work there.
I hear you.
Less stress.
So we will, we will be seeing a long-term contract from you and a monthly, maybe not a contract, but something stating what...
Yeah, I mean, I think the long-term contracts, you won't have to worry about until close to the January, if that's what we're all in agreement and wanna work towards.
But don't we?
I don't know that we can vote on anything in a work session.
You can, we can, no, you can all...
So that's something we'll have to put into our next selectment.
Right, so that next meeting is on the 7th.
Right.
Right, right.
We'll have the contract ready for that, and yeah.
But don't, don't we need the long-term one before the 17th? Or no, I'm...
Well, no, we just need, no, we just need to have the agreement, his price from now to December.
Okay.
And then we'll go, then the next contract will start January 1st, so...
Right, and that puts you in a whole new budget here, as far as from what I'm hearing.
Am I to interpret, Josh, that when we get to that contracted price, 20 grand seems to be the number we're using? That's where you wanna be?
That's where I want it. Most of my three-year contracts, I do put in a percentage increase every year.
Like 3%?
So it starts at 20, and then most of my towns with 3% every year. That way you guys know what you're raising for the three year.
And I like the sound of the January to December. I was, when I walked into this, I was a little confused by that whole thing.
This whole thing's been a little...
It all started back when they wanted to find somebody else. Your town manager was Lois at the time. She had some other assessors that she thought would be better and fit, better fit the town.
So this has been that way since, since Lois?
Yeah, I didn't do it.
No, it was before you. Yep.
But I didn't know that background either.
And, you know, we've had a lot of trouble with town managers, I think, and that doesn't help.
We're hoping to correct some of that stuff.
Yeah, I hope you can too, because...
We need to.
I think we're on a better road. I really think we're on a better road, so...
Attending this meeting tonight, seeing everybody here, everybody on the same page, no animosity, I think we're headed in the right direction.
Yeah.
We had 50 people for a special...
Wow.
That didn't have any controversial things on the agenda.
Yeah, there was only one question, two, right? Only one question was asked tonight?
Three, there were three, yep.
Well, just, just an explanation of what's...
Theirs. Their question was one of them, and then the 45,000 for, we had to get permission to spend that 40,000.
Yeah.
Uh, 45,000, and then the 2%, so just three.
No, I mean, people getting up in the crowd and actually, no, I think there was only one question.
Oh, yes, yes, you're right.
Yeah.
But unfortunately for us, and you nailed it right on the head with the commitment thing, somebody has to step in. Somebody has to pick up the pieces, and we have to move on.
Right.
And us three dummies decided to do it.
Yeah, unfortunately, you just, you know, it was a bad time to step in, but if you didn't do it, it weren't gonna get better.
I love this town.
Yep.
Born here and I've lived in it my whole life, you know?
He said, we've been working here since 83. I think it was the first year that Hamlet Associates started.
It's a different shape for me. My background's criminal law, so this town stuff is...
Crazy, eye-opening experience.
If you want to go that route, we'll get out of your hair, and that's what we'll go with for now.
I'm really glad you showed up, Josh. We really, we...
I think this was good.
We really appreciate it. And I think, I think there's been a lot of nobody on the same page. And this is how you get on the same page.
Right.
Right here. You and I talked a couple of times. You know, these guys need to be part of it, these guys need to be part of it, you know, it's...
I'm just a newbie.
The town needs to be a part of it. This needs to be something that the town knows and understands. And then when we do come to a meeting and we need to move forward, they have some background, they have an idea of what we're talking about. And this has been good for us. I didn't understand everything to do with your billing cycles right to this meeting right now. And I think the way we move forward from where we were is try to incorporate continuity in everything we do.
And I have my contractors set up for the first Friday of every month, so if you don't get a check, let me know, because it's probably lost in the mail, and we'll do another one.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Damn, I'm gonna, I'm gonna deliver it.
There you go.
Same stamp, just went by and dropped it off.
I gotta say, I could, you know, I worked with Brandy when she was the town manager, and it was really nice, because she would at least call if she had any questions. She'd say, I don't understand this, and we'd get together. If I could help her, she could help me, we could work together. You know, so I think it's not always a lot of experience for a town manager, but as somebody that's willing to work with other people.
Right.
If they don't know the answer, don't be afraid to ask.
And you know, that's our next obstacle.
Right.
Our next obstacle as a board is to find somebody, somebody to sit in that chair.
This town has ticked off a lot of contractors. We've got to stop doing that.
One second, you do.
We've got to appreciate our contractors.
And we do appreciate what you do, Josh.
Well, thank you very much. I'd like to hear that. But yeah, we'll go from there, and...
Yeah, sounds good.
Good. I will give you a call in the morning to confirm that I got your second check ready.
Yep.
And then you can just come pick it up. I won't mail it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay?
Sounds like a plan, you guys.
You as well, thank you.
Thank you.
High five, high five. You don't have to get out.
Have a good one, Brandy.
You too, Josh.
See you again.
Hey, I'm not even actually...
Have a good night.
You too, Josh, thank you, but I'm not actually here. Good, thank you very much. My sense is that if you go looking for other, other people to do your assessments, you're gonna find out that they're at least as expensive and that they don't know the area, your town. There's a learning curve.
Locals, local has its benefits.
Yeah. It does, because, yeah, I mean...
Where's he at of?
Out of Park.
Maybe under 23, next to the old McCusick School.
He has the old library.
Oh, yeah.
What used to be the library up there.
Okay.
So, but I mean, he's always, answers any questions that we have. We send him emails. What we've started to do is take the abatement so that they not get inundated with phone calls. We're taking the abatements and we're faxing them over or emailing them so that they can make contact with the resident rather than the resident constantly calling them. So we've kinda switched up a little bit, so that they're not, like, getting pounded with phone calls.
So from this section, we have a selectmen's meeting next Wednesday.
Right.
So one, an agenda item needs to be put on to make a vote on this.
Right.
For our, our next selectmen's meeting. And the other thing we need to do is, we need to study the budget a little bit. Figure, figure out where we're pulling it from.
Have you ever pulled the Trio report that's more detailed than this, so that every single check you write? Oh, yeah, I've pulled it before. They haven't seen it. They haven't seen this.
Right.
I don't know if I can ask, but every single check at this point right now.
Well, I was thinking we'd look at the general administration, and I can explain how the whole thing works at least.
To me?
No. I think you got it.
You wanted to have some tricks up your sleeve, but...
No.
It's like...
No, not to you.
Trying to, but you know, the problem with this is, I, I run this stupid thing, and I compare it to the project, the papers that I give you. And the chart of accounts is an odd, god-awful mess.
It's gotten worse since they started getting rid of things like Public Works. I mean, it used to be, you'd look at the chart of accounts and you'd have, you know, administration is account, is department one, and then you, number 10 after that is always personnel. And so you had that in Public Works, you had that, you actually had that in Recreation, you have that in Cemeteries. And, and then, you know, these kind of things. Mileage was in a bunch of them.
Yeah, oh, no, this whole thing needs to be revamped.
But now, now that you're not in the town office, town hall, so your town expenses that way are, it's all a mess.
The whole thing's a mess.
Yeah.
It's an absolute disaster. You got fire department in your town office.
You shouldn't.
You do.
You shouldn't. Department 5 and Department 1 should not mix.
Yeah, well, so, don't let this scare you. This is what we work with. These are your totals. If you look across, obviously, the very top is your revenues, this is what we've taken in to date. Then you have, like, like Brandy was saying, number one, the dark numbers, that is your department. So that would be the line item on your warrants. And then it's broke down what you spent underneath. And then the very, obviously, the fourth column over is what your balance is. So like, if you look at wages and salaries for 28,000, what you budgeted in your town, in your town meeting, you have spent 50,000, so you're negative 22,000 in that one line.
But as long as the dark number stays in where it's gotta be, you can rub Peter to pay Paul in those categories, is my understanding of it.
Because, I mean, when they... I'm at a loss for words right now, but when they nominated to drop the budget, they didn't say, hey, we're gonna nominate this portion of it.
This is...
This is the last select board.
This is my fault. I got up and said, you get 90,000 more in your general administration budget than you had last year. Why? Now, I'd gone to the town manager, and he and I had sat down, and we discussed every single situation, and he could tell me why. But he didn't stand up at the town meeting and tell everybody else why. And so they're immediately like, well, I guess you don't need it, cut it. And by the time I realized what was going on and didn't get back into the middle of it, it had been well and truly cut.
I, I wouldn't take the blame on that one.
Well, I...
I think there was other reasons there, but...
Yeah, there was a, but I did, I stood up and I said, but I didn't go behind the town manager's back, because I hated when people would sandbag you like that and come to a town meeting and, oh, I've got you, you know, explain this, explain that. Like, these are things you gotta explain. But I don't know if it's because of the tone of the meeting, or the size of the meeting, or where we went wrong, but we did.
We told that a lot, didn't we?
Yeah. But 279 shouldn't... Cut you too badly.
Cut us $58,000.
58,000.
Right, and we, right, and most of it's gonna be what, in, in the office lines, because you now have two people, or should have three people?
It's all office stuff. It's your planning board, it's your contracts, it's your insurance.
When I read the budget, I didn't understand why, like, you'll find things in other budgets that I would think would belong in this budget.
Yep, and that's part of what got them, too.
That's where I'm really struggling understanding this budget.
For instance, you didn't fund your Recreation, because it, it's a department of its own, 45 or 40. Because to your town manager, it made more sense for it to be in either with all your other contracts or under Public Works. I mean, because what, what is that but taking care of?
Town property.
Town property. But not realizing how Trio worked, and that you had to get, you had to get that money into general adminis... I mean, you'd have to get that money into that general administration line in order to spend it on Recreation. I don't know how you're getting your lawn mowed, actually, but...
Uh, we're negative. We're hoping, we're hoping that when we go to town meeting on August 17th, that they'll put it back in, in the budget. And what happened there was, we were trying to, the day that we were putting the town report together, about 45 minutes before my deadline, I was sending, we were changing the financials. And so that got caught completely out of the town report. And nobody caught it until the book was already done. And we were then a week and a half, two weeks, a town meeting.
In May.
Mm-hmm. Yep, so that's how that one fell apart.
Yep.
So like plumbing inspector, if you look at that, that's on the third page. That is, that is an in-and-out account. He brings monies in for whatever plumbing stuff that he's done. Six, uh, 75% of it goes to him, 25% to the state. And if it is a new system, we have to pay $15 out of that 265 to DEP for some water or something or other. So it's in and out. That's really not anything the town keeps.
The town doesn't get, doesn't get anything out of it.
Nope.
Nothing.
So that's really not even a budget line, as far as...
Right.
That the town votes on, it just... So like, here's another example. So personnel for your fire department, your fire department is on the same page, page three. We only raised 15,000. So this, this account didn't get cut in town meeting. They have spent 12,420 for payroll. All they've got left, and they got six months to go, is 2,500. So, and what they did there, when we went to budget meeting... there when we went to budget meeting, Jeff had put in $20,000. And then the budget committee cut it to 15. So that's what we had to go with.
We had a budget committee that had no idea.
We had three people.
I know. I, you remember, I told you, I said, I'll be.
If you had five, if I had five, you said you'd come back.
Well, you should've.
So I didn't have five, so I didn't call you.
So my question on that while war rate there, we've had this discussion a couple of times, we're all here, let's talk about it. Looking at committees, specifically budget committee, what is the process of changing how that's done? I personally think we should have seven or nine people on a budget committee. More cross-section.
It's all up to you.
I think all.
Who makes that decision? As a board?
You can make it in the board.
You create the warrant. That is your warrant because you signed it at the end. So and then you produce it to the public for their vote. So however you write your article, you can say, I want $5,000 carry forward if you have a balance left. I wanna carry it forward. And then for as far as personnel committees or whatever, you can have the people nominate people from the floor up to whatever number. Nine people? We need nine people for the budget committee.
They always used to just put a sign-up sheet.
Right.
And then they would.
Those people would be nominated from, from moderator?
No, then the town manager would put a bunch of people on the list and say, these are the people that wanna, you know, you, you can choose if you want a nine committee and I've got 13, you can choose nine or, you know, you can appoint them.
So we don't have to bowl on them as a town?
You don't, you don't have to vote at town meeting. 20 was way, way too many. I was on the budget committee, 10 or 11 wasn't bad.
How many, how many alternate are on that? That committee, that budget committee?
I don't think there's any.
So Diana Baller's not even an alternate?
Nope, no, and she stepped down the last I knew.
I didn't even know we had a committee. I don't see it anywhere.
Yeah.
Might be in the front of your town report, though.
Well, so the prior year, instead of three, you had Rick Colorin, myself, and Matt Bell. And they wanted to pass the budget in two one-hour meetings sessions. And Matt made one of them. And.
So our entire budget for the town was passed in two one-hour sessions.
Granted that Rick has seen it since 2000 or so and I, but then they wanted changes. And then we had to have another meeting because Rick and I were like, yeah, we're not signing off on changes without sitting down and talking about this. So it just got smaller and smaller and smaller and I was the only one left to do anything about the budget and I said, I'm not doing this by myself. I'm not gonna stand up to the town and say, hey, this is my bu, this is my budget.
So I've had a few people approach me, and probably these guys have too, about wanting to serve on a budget committee. So do we put in our next selectmen's meeting as an agenda item to visit? Start with a budget committee? Visit that, figure out how to have a sign-up sheet at the next town meeting we have?
Yep. You can do it that way. You can put it on the website that you're looking for members and anybody who's interested, call or come in or.
The only problem with that is not everybody has web.
True.
They don't have the internet. They don't, you know, you might have some of your older people that just, they're bed at 7 o'clock at night.
And they don't ever check the.
They don't check the website.
Town website, yeah.
I'm at 8:30, I'm at 11.
Made it. I'm at 9.
We do have a number of people in that town, super qualified, like Rhonda Taylor. Rhonda Taylor's a great example. She's approached all of us about it.
And I just think under this new board, that's a lot more people willing to help.
I kept trying to think, make your run for selectman, if you wanna do that.
I guess, I guess the reason I put it in town meeting is because they kinda got soured with the committee being picked by the board. So.
I understand that.
If we put it to the townspeople, nominate me, it might take a little longer in a town meeting, but you'd still have your control. We need nine people.
Right.
And then nine people could step up. I don't know.
Each, each one of the three of us feel like we don't want any of the old stigma left. The board controlling, the committees controlling, we don't want any of that.
Hypotism stuff.
We just.
I mean, to me, if a town meeting takes a little bit longer, if the town gets the choice.
We used to have town meetings that ran from 9:00 in the morning to 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon.
Had great food.
And had great, had great food at lunchtime.
And I, I would like to go back to that.
I would love to.
I think it makes you a more of a community.
And it was, it was always the fourth Saturday of March. So you, if you really wanted to be a part of town meeting, you knew every year. And so you didn't schedule something else that, that, you know.
We knew when it was.
And you could be there. So, I don't know. I think that's.
I think we need to visit some of those things.
We can.
That we're discussing right now.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a, there's a few boards that need to come.
I do too.
That are pretty high on the priority list.
And I think depending on what we do with the road commissioner piece.
Do you have a road commissioner at the moment? You guys as a board are the road commissioner?
Yeah.
Okay. You just have to have a road commissioner.
Yes, so, yeah.
Yep, so you're it.
So you're it.
Pretty much Josh is the road commissioner.
Guilty by default.
Well, if I'm road commissioner, we're gonna, we're gonna start spending some money.
Well, you have that authority. Actually, but you as the board are the road commissioner.
Right.
But if you had a road commissioner, they have that authority, which is why the board used to saddle the town manager with that position. Cause they didn't want anybody else to have that authority. Never mind, you don't know anything about roads. You know.
Or the time. It's, it's time consuming.
It is very time consuming.
So you have two, you have two options to have, to have us as a board be road commissioner and have a committee to advise us. Or an educated road commissioner that understands roads and has the authority to do it.
And must still have a committee if you wanted one.
And that person, we've always saddled that on to the town manager. And it hasn't, it always hasn't been that successful.
No, it isn't.
And we need to figure out a way to move forward in this whole road thing with something that's gonna be successful.
Yes, cause we need to, there's, I mean, that one hole, we need to fix that. We gotta make a decision.
We were talking about this too.
I've looked at three or four different ways to fix that hole. And of course, everybody had a different idea on how to fix that.
Are we on Flanders?
Which hole are we on?
Oh, I thought he meant his road, the mud hole that.
Oh, no.
No.
No, I'm, as far as I'm concerned, I, I really think that is the, probably the worst part of town, but no, right on the Flanders hill, we have a bad washout that would hurt a car right now. I mean, we have it coned and, but it needs to be addressed.
We need to figure out the authority and get it done.
But we also have Borough Road that's, next year probably will be the potential to be just as bad as Line Road for a short section.
Yep. Well, that's what's been missed is the gravel roads. You got, you got most of your paved roads redone except for the, your in-town streets.
Mm-hmm, and some of those that get attention too.
Yes, exactly, but the gravel roads have not been.
Yeah, they have no material. I mean, that's, you can only take what's on it, off it so much.
Right, right.
I mean, before throwing something back on, reshaping it, and on and on, crowding it. While we're, while we're on road roads.
Yeah, hey, you're getting it. See, and you got the time, so you could do it.
I guess I have a test for while my own road. So while we're on roads, the salt sand, we have Jeff enter us in on the buy for the salt. We, as road commissioners, where we don't have a town manager, I assume have to take the responsibility of getting the sand put up, buying the sand, getting, and now I'm assuming Newt does it by the hour to put the, put the salt sand up.
That's what he did in the past.
That's the way it's been done in the past.
And by the yard.
But he said that he didn't do it last year, right?
I thought you, I thought you, you talked to him the other day.
I haven't talked to Chris, no.
Oh, you didn't talk to him.
And I didn't talk to Patrick. I've texted Patrick to ask him who it was that put it up.
Okay.
But I was thinking that, did you talk to?
I have not talked to, and I should've asked Warren tonight. I know at some point in time, they didn't do it.
About putting up last year's.
So it used to be that.
He did do it.
Okay.
I think he did.
When we had a road commissioner, when I first came on as town manager, the road commissioner used his own equipment and put up our sand pile. After that, we bought from several different people. The one that worked the best was Steve Lawson. And he would bring his trucks in with the sand. So the road commissioner has to make sure that the sand arrives and the salt arrives and so that, that there's somebody there to mix it. And so that it all keeps going. Otherwise, you've got lots of people hanging out here, hanging out there.
I don't think it's up to us to micromanage the schedule on it. We just need to figure out who's gonna do it.
Somebody has to.
I think, I think that there's already plastic to cover it when it's done.
Really? The tar, oh, look at it. There were tarps, whether they survive, you know, just go to Paris, whatever it is, down in Newport, and buy another big tarp if you have to, but.
So my question is, um, this is August.
The sand bid does not always come in lowest through the state.
For the sand or the salt?
Salt.
That's all you mean?
Salt, not the sand. I don't even know who's offering.
And I know Jeff, Jeff Libby, when he was here, signed us in for the salt by, he found the cheapest. And, and we're, we're set with that.
Good.
We need to, we need to figure out how to pick a contractor to
Sand.
Bring the sand.
The one you said, is it Granger, not Granger, um, in Milo?
Garrish.
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 Garrish is what Jeff suggested.
See, Jeff has a lot of good contacts there, cause I couldn't get Garrish to even give me a price.
But Garrish is not going to come mix it.
No, they're gonna, they're gonna truck sand and dump it in the pot.
Dump the sand, yep, and then the salt will be dumped and Chris will.
That's also coming from a ways away, so the trucking.
Somebody has to be in charge of.
We're gonna, I, I don't know. I mean, we'll have to look at it, but I, I think we should try to get some prices from people around here.
Is this something that we just call for prices or do we put out a bid? We don't have much time.
No, we don't.
I don't.
There, there's paperwork on your computer somewhere.
Everybody's too busy to.
With the bids.
I don't think you're gonna get it.
There is, honest, maybe.
So I, I think you're just better off to call for prices and right now, we're gonna pay a high price because we didn't do it in spring. Or last, you know.
Is Steve out of, Steve not running the pit out here in Sangerville? Didn't he buy, didn't he buy Kitchen's pit?
He did, yep. And actually, that's a very sandy pit, that's.
Well, there's sharp sand and all.
He, uh.
And then we've got the pit.
He provided us with really good sand for a couple of years. I know he did it.
Yep.
What's the story with Chummy Jackson's pit? Now that Chummy's gone?
I have to talk to Rusty.
Yep. Rusty has it. I mean, it's his pit now.
I don't know, the, the previous board was not satisfied with the quality of that sand sometimes.
That's where the clay was. Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. It was hard to spread it, big clumps in the.
That was.
They, they were, well, and Newt, and Newt were really happy with Lawson's because they used to get big rocks that would get caught in their sander and spreaders and, and, you know, being obvious.
You shouldn't get rocks and sand.
Right.
Oh, yeah, I wouldn't think so, but.
So Michelle, I think that's something for our next select board meeting. We need to make this sand decision.
Okay.
Whatever's in, I mean, we're, we're, we're in August tomorrow morning.
Do you want me to call some of the local contractors and get prices on the sand?
Do we wanna put that on here or does one of us wanna do it?
I, I have no problem calling around.
I mean, I know a lot of them as well, willing to, whatever you guys wanna do. We just need to make headway on this and put these things into the piles so they get done.
Now, do we know how many yards are up there?
I believe it's 1,700.
And what do we normally use in the winter?
Jeff told me we needed another 1,700.
My conversation, my conversation was with Jeff was this. He said, it's tempting if you have leftover to reduce the amount you get. He says, but you get heavy and light years and what's left over doesn't go bad. And it balances out if you order the same amount each year. That was the advice I got from him when he left.
The problem we have there is we have a pile down there that hasn't been covered.
That's right.
It really should be stirred.
That's right, remixed.
You know.
Because of the weather, draining, the salt.
We got a bunch of salt on bottom and.
Nothing on top.
Sand on top.
Gotcha.
That's correct.
So I do have the notes at work, exactly what he told me. And he also gave me prices for culverts, so that's all in one folder down at the office. So I can pull that out for you.
I think we need to make that an agenda item for our next meeting and make a decision on what to do with it and get it happening.
Okay.
You guys agree?
Do we want a separate price for the material and then a price to mix it? Or if they're willing to do it, cause I mean, I don't think Garr.
I think we need to ask that question when we get a price on sand if they're willing to mix it.
Yeah.
Do Newt want to mix it?
That's.
They, they will.
They will.
As of conversation today, yep.
I, I think if they're willing to, they're the ones that are gonna deal with it, throws up in the back of their trucks, so.
Yeah, I guess from today, he said he was willing to do it.
And by the hour.
Okay.
And that's in his contract as hourly rate for mixing the sand?
No, we look, no, we look.
No contract, nothing in his contract.
No, no.
His contract is strictly plowing.
Plowing.
Strictly.
So.
Wow, and sanding when he's.
Sanding in sidewalks.
So we've got to address that with him. We gotta look at his contract. We gotta address the hourly rate and if he is or is not doing it, you guys agree?
Yeah, cause you don't have any equipment to do it.
No, I'm not doing it. Too much to do. We'll send Mikey up there when he gets his new tractor.
And I didn't ask him what, what it took or how much it took last, last time he.
I can.
Was it a day, two days? I know he did say something about he would start and, and then you'd get no trucks the next day. Then also you'd get a couple of trucks the day after.
That's what everybody says, it's a real pain.
Try to coordinate the salt and the sand at the same time.
Was a pain.
Wow, somebody like Garrish is gonna truck in with dump trailers.
Live bottomers.
And they're gonna just flood it. Can you keep up with Garrish? You know, that's a.
Somebody like Lawson would have wheelers and be more.
Right, and then, then they may do it all as a, okay, we're gonna mix it. It may be, say, $10 a yard to mix it, you know.
Yep.
Everything all in the yardage, you know.
So I think when we approach these people, we need to ask them two questions. How much is a yard and how much is it mixed? And then go from there. Is that what you guys think?
So do you have it written down somewhere, what Jeff said?
Yep.
Okay, and what we normally get a year? I'll try to stop in tomorrow and get those numbers.
Okay.
I talked to Jeff Tuesday, I think it was, and he, uh, he was willing to, when we get ready to address this, he's, he was willing to share what he knows about it, which is more than what I know about it. I'm willing to take information anywhere I can get it.
Would he rather be road commissioner? He has all the contacts.
He does.
He did, I mean.
That's what I was picking his brain for.
That's some of the things that I found the most difficult is, these people didn't help me, didn't care if I called them and I needed this.
Some lady called me looking for sand, right?
Yep, they don't care.
That's why I think as we move forward, piggybacking this on a town manager that doesn't have a lot of municipal experience is a recipe for failure, I think.
It's been proven.
And if we do piggyback it on, I think it's real important to have a committee to advise them, to have these conversations that we just had, and come up with the best numbers and bring it all to the table.
I have to tell you that with the committee, the biggest problem I had was everybody said, I'm too busy to meet, I'm too busy to meet, I can't make it. But then you had farmers, you had contractors themselves, I mean, and so, but you gotta find somebody who has some knowledge, a knowledge base there too, I mean.
Right.
That's what I found difficult, just to.
Okay, where are we going next? We're getting through our pile.
We are getting there, you, well, I don't know where you guys are standing with your piles, but I happened to think of the dam the other day, the dam boards need to be fixed.
Down here by the ball field?
By the ball field, yep. I remember Jeff saying that we have to get the water down to a certain point, but it seems to me that we have to call somebody to get permission to do that, don't we? Because it's water, because it's in the, it affects.
Dams are basically controlled by the landowners around them.
I believe we own the dam.
We do own the dam, is someone I can tell.
And I believe that we have full control of that dam.
Okay, so then the next question would be, who's gonna replace the boards? Who do we, I have never even been out on the dam, I know where it is.
Call Blaine Newt.
Is there an association on that pond?
There is not.
There's no, there's no other one.
That's exactly what I asked the other day.
But I think, I think if we're gonna fix the dam, you oughta talk to Parkman and.
Correct.
And see.
Again, everybody sitting right on the table won't come up with it, so.
And see if they're willing to kick something in, because Parkman won't have any waterfront if that dam goes.
You're talking financially and just putting them on the same page that it needs to be done.
Yep.
I don't think there's that many boards on that dam, is there?
There isn't, I think Blaine did them, and I think you might be able to get, get him to saw you some more, their hemlock, the big, thick hemlock planks. I tried to get it done while we had the drought, that would have been the time to, to do it, but.
Well, and if you talk to Jeff, maybe he can give you some more information, because again, I think that's in my notes at the office, he was rattling stuff off.
The D, I had the DEP look at it, they were down here for something else, I said, well, while you're here, come look at our dam, and so he, the guy said, yeah, but you can do whatever you want.
Okay.
I'm like, oh, I was, yeah, you can do whatever you want, I'm like, what did he say?
Our code enforcement guy has some really good contacts with DEP too, he might be somebody to just bring into the conversation.
Yeah, this is a Ford. This is a prior CEO.
Hmm.
Yep. But the DEP has actually looked at the, at it.
So, terms of, this came today from Anders Goggen Bank, they are actually coming to Greenville, so I'm just FYI for you, if, um, it's like a reception, meet and greet type thing, um, if you, anyone wants to go to it, um. Also, were we going to set anything up for them to come talk to you about the banking? I had a note on it, and I just wanna revisit that, do I need to set something up so they can come talk to the board? I know Jeff is, were you there? Yeah, you were there.
Yeah.
But I wasn't sure if the other two wanted to ask questions.
I think we're, I think we're skipping a step between here and there, um, I think it's kinda pointless to get through this until we determine an interim town manager, or what we're gonna do with the town manager, I think, that's, that was the next subject that I had, was where we're going with the town manager thing, and I think this falls in behind that.
Behind that, okay.
You guys agree with that?
The only question I have is, do we have money that we can't use right now because it's somewhere, because we haven't shifted it?
No.
Okay, so everything if we had to have.
It's all in Canada, except we have seven hundred and fifty-nine left in Maine Highlands, and the only reason I left it there is because if for some reason we need to make change, we're not making connections, I have something that I can go to. That's the only reason.
Is it in a CD still, or no?
No.
It's liquidated.
Liquidated.
So yes, I agree with you, Jeff, the town manager issue first.
Okay.
I think this falls.
And something the town manager wants you hire should bring to you and say, hey, I've looked at this, this, and this, do you wanna talk to Anders Goggen Bank, or, or, you know, just lay it out for you, that's their job, that's yours. As far as the meeting that's coming up, you have to fund the animal shelter, you probably already paid it, I can't remember what.
We did pay it, but that was the part that got left off.
Yep, the nine hundred got left off, that, you don't have to raise, you appropriated as long as you can find it in Trio.
So right now, guy, our ECO guy?
He has not given us a resignation yet, no, he's still ours. I think we'll be one of the last one he drops, actually. So since we mentioned Trio, the other day I did cash out, um, would have been on the twenty-sixth. This audit shows me having cash five thousand six hundred and sixty-four, that's what the, the printout says. I actually deposited ten thousand nine hundred fifty-six twenty-six. This should match what I have, not even close. We can't even, we cannot get this, we cannot figure out what happened to this audit to make it all work. And we'd actually been in touch with Trio on another issue that Mike actually got to watch, which still haunts me, um, it ended up taking his whole tax bill and put it in the discount. And I'm like, you, no. It, it all went to the discount.
So you think that's where the discrepancy is coming from?
This is another whole separate day, this is another whole separate day, we've gotta call into Trio, waiting to get an answer back.
Is it a software problem, or?
I think it's gotta be, I mean, my cash should have been spot on, and we've gone through every single account that we took tax money, just to make sure it logged in right, and all of those came out right.
And we're still five thousand dollars off.
Mm-hmm, and because I had that kind of money, I deposited, I did not wait to make sure that my audit matched what my cash was.
And you think this is a software issue in Trio?
I do. I don't know exactly what, but.
Trio is up for, up for replacement next year, right, that, that program?
That's moving to the, to the website, yep, and, and everything will be upgraded. At this point, none of this is upgraded.
So how do we paddle through this until the upgrade? Do we, do we, do we need an auditor to come in and look at this, or?
I don't know, to tell you the truth.
Trio should, Paris should be able to.
They should be able to tell me what's wrong with us.
Yes.
But I wanted the board to know, 'cause when we do go to an audit this coming year, when we get to the other side of this, this is gonna show up, and I did deposit everything we had in the office because I didn't want it, I didn't want it around, but it's not matching my bookwork. And we've been through everything on this, back and forth, we've added up the staff, we've added up all the transactions, we've done, you know, we've added everything up, and what we come out with is not the same as what Trio has. So that's more just an FYI.
So does Trio merge with another data entry system, or is it all stand right alone?
It's by itself.
By itself?
Yep.
And everything is inputted into that system?
Yep.
So that problem is not, two systems not talking to each other, this is all within that Trio program, I understand.
That's probably something to do with taxes, 'cause every year, there's always something. I could see a couple hundred dollars here or there, but that's a lot. No, but I mean, Trio always has a bug come.
Oh, yeah.
Taxes.
It's, it's known for, yeah, it's known for, but Mike's situation, when that flipped his payment right to the discount, I'm like, and I backed out, all the way out to the, to the receipt and went back in, and later that day, his discount came up on my audit, and it shouldn't have, 'cause I backed out of it. So something's wonky in there, and the problem is that they don't wanna fix this type, this type of problem.
Because it's going away.
This system's expiring.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, it's, it's, we need to fix it.
Don't, don't we pay them something?
A lot.
A lot.
Unison.
It was nine grand.
That was, uh, we paid ninety-six hundred dollars this year for our license, and we only budgeted eighty-four. Now, I don't know why we budgeted less than, I don't know if there was no contact, who should have called to see what the prices are, but the bill came in ninety-six eighty-four or something like that.
That would probably fall under town manager umbrella.
As far as making sure that your contracts.
And lack thereof is probably part of the explanation, not that it would be Jeff's fault, just we didn't have enough.
Right.
People for the job that needed to be done.
He's only interim.
Yeah, only fifteen hours.
You can get much done.
If you, if you got a mess, and, yeah.
A mess takes fifteen hours.
Yeah, and any time that.
And he was pretty much for roads and fire department, ultimately, I mean, that's what he dealt with, you know?
You might wanna think about breaking your town manager up into specifics like that. Road commissioner, you know, he has skills with the fire department, which was always something I, I struggled with, 'cause again, I don't know all the rules and regulations. I called Jeff a lot, 'cause he knew all, all the rules and regulations, um, and he got all the into a lot of issues that way.
So that's.
My strengths are administrative, you know, his were road commissioner, and I, I don't know if you could cherry pick and find a way to.
Divide the position of the three people?
Well, however many, you know, whatever worked, but.
We need to address this town manager thing, now, we can legally run as a town dividing the duties between us and some to her. But is it in our best interest?
We figured that out for sure, we can do that in the interim period.
You have to make, you have to have an administrative assistant, you have to have somebody, don't you?
You have to have a town manager of some sort.
Well, like Parkman, they have Brenda, who's an administrative assistant, and then they pay their chair on the select board more to deal with more day-to-day stuff, or.
Yeah, see, they're not a town manager setup over there, so.
They're not, but, but they're, but they're asking if we could do it a different way, and we've looked at it before, it was actually on a warrant, and the board got up and said, we don't want you folks to vote on this, we've discovered X, Y, and Z about this, and we don't think it'll work, and it didn't make any sense, and we skipped over the article, so I'm, I'm not sure, you probably have some other options.
You have to change your form of government, basically.
Yep, yep.
But the problem is there, that this board has two businessmen, so they don't have the time to put in, to, to do that type of setup.
Right.
So I don't think we can, I don't think we can change it in that direction.
I, I mean, I'm saying, look at, look at options, I don't know, I don't think we need a full-time town manager, but we have such a mess, that you might need one for.
We need more than ten to fifteen hours a week.
That's correct.
No question about, I mean.
I spent usually thirty to forty, and that wasn't quite enough.
Yeah.
Well, I think while we have the town hall issue, we're going to need somebody full-time for.
We got a lot of big-ticket things to get through.
You have a lot, yes.
It's not like we're just walking into a town that's just, you know, just settled right in and running smoothly.
No, you've got some hurdles.
We're in a disaster.
Yeah, we are, so I don't know, maybe you need that thirty to forty, and then a road commissioner, or.
We've gotta get this ball moving, though, what we're gonna do, do we, we have a few candidates, I was, I sat in on an interview with one of them, with the previous board, these guys have not interviewed anybody.
Right.
And we've got ads out.
We have one, we haven't, we don't have, because no one gave me an okay on this print right here that I sent to you.
The print to go to the newspaper.
Yeah, I haven't done any of that, because I wanted you guys, if, do I need to add something, do I need to take something out?
We'll add that to our.
Agenda.
Agenda, 'cause we can't make a decision on that tonight.
Are you going Bangor Daily, or are you going?
Eastern Gazette. Eastern Gazette webpage, Facebook page.
And MMA?
And MMA's already up and running anyway, so you have two local people, the person that was interest, interviewed before has been into the office, still is very interested, even though he has interviewed with one other office, but he is up for the challenge that we are giving him.
And he's semi-local?
Yes, yep. So he couldn't interview this week, but he could interview next week if the other two board members want to start that interview there.
So as we're writing our agenda, do you guys think we should start with interviewing what we have for candidates, we can start on this process? If you do, then we need to make an agenda item on our next Wednesday's board meeting.
I think we need to get that ball rolling.
I do too.
Instead of having the hat tossed around.
So the question is, do we, do we want to schedule an interview one at a time?
How many applicants do we have?
We have two local and.
Two local, the other ones are like.
Far, far away, yeah, okay, those.
Florida, New York.
I think the ones local, we should.
I'm personally, and again, this is my opinion, the more local, the better.
Right.
Somebody that's involved in our community at some level.
Yeah. But I mean, everybody local, as far as I'm concerned, if they put in an application.
Should be interviewed.
We should interview them, the ones from away.
Yeah, 'cause you had like some from benefit in.
New Hampshire.
And there's, there's negotiation on housing at some event, like.
No.
Yeah. I've got a rental.
Do you want to interview?
Oh, you do, gotta camp or something.
On a different day other than your, your meeting night?
So what do you guys think?
You don't wanna do them all on the same night, right?
On interview times, do you want to, do we want to do an interview after a select meeting, you know, before a selectmen's meeting, do we wanna have a different night altogether?
I guess we should see how many items we're gonna have.
This is gonna be a, this is gonna be a pretty stacked selectmen's meeting right now, where we are right now.
So we shouldn't probably track schedule for that night, but I mean.
And again, we may have to talk to the candidates and pick a time that works for them too.
Right.
Do we wanna make contact with the ones we're interested in and, and have her try to set up a tone?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
They were both local, right?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
You're also gonna have to be able to pay these people, which means, again, your administrative, general administrative budget has to go up.
We better wait till after this meeting before we do anything like that.
Yeah, I think, yep.
That's gonna save you your way out of the money.
Right, right, so I think, I think if you explain it to people.
I don't think it would hurt to do the interviews and be.
Well, to tell you the truth, the, the one that stood up, threw the motion up there, said he kinda did them more on principle, but kinda regretted it at the end.
Yeah, I mean.
So I, so I don't think it's gonna be a hard issue with that.
I didn't think, you know, when I stood up and said, hey, you have ninety extra thousand, I think if you just laid it out, it would have been a piece of cake.
You were looking for clarity.
I, I knew the crowd was riled, and I was like, okay, here, here's a softball laid out for them, you know, just tell them like you told me.
Yeah, and not one of them stood up.
Yeah, and all, all.
We probably had to wait till after this, this is like more meaningful, we figure out that part, make sure the funds are gonna be there.
My only fear is, is qualified candidates that we may be able to hire need to understand that we're interested in them, so the local people we have, I think we need to, if, if we push it out past the town meeting, I think we need to stay in contact with them, either us or Michelle, or.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've talked to him, I, he, he understands the situation, so, and he's, he's good, he's still very interesting coming here.
Maybe you interview them and let them view the town meeting. If they go running scared, then they're not in.
That's not a horrendous idea.
Well, we have issues, so we might as well be upfront about it.
And I don't think interviewing before that meeting is, an interview is not a commitment to hire. An interview is us trying to figure out if they.
Qualify them.
What, what skill set?
That's right. I'm not opposed to starting to interview before the town meeting. Obviously, we can't make any promises because we don't have a checkbook plan with at this point.
I mean, I, I say we.
But you could get a feel.
Sooner the better.
You could get a feel for like what prices are they at, you know? One of them put it right in the application, if I remember right, the other one I don't think did, but.
The, the two, the two local ones, I had a very good idea in reading their resumes, where they wanted to be.
Okay, yeah, because I haven't honestly read the resumes.
Two or three times and I, I got a pretty good idea where both of them want to be.
Okay.
And that'll help you to make the warrant article.
That's correct.
On what you need for money, because.
There you go, that's where I was going with this, but we're going right back to the money.
Well, and the thing is too, I mean, we gotta look at it, we've only got five months before our new sea, our new year.
Right.
So then we just have this hurdle.
Yes, but you, you haven't received your COLA raise or any other raise for the year.
No.
Because they don't have the money.
That's correct.
Just so you know, so when you're making that article.
We, we knew. Michelle has politely explained that.
I'm, I'm sure she has, but it.
Very, very, very politely, very, very patiently.
It never hurts to have everybody on the same page and take care of your own.
And we are sympathetic, same.
Absolutely, yes, that's, um, I'm not going anywhere, but it would.
Let us fire me. But it would be really bad to just, to have this meeting and then go, oh, we didn't put quite enough money in there to do what?
All the, all the things we need to do.
So that's the next thing, is we really need to start spending.
Need to crunch those numbers.
Crunching them numbers, that's, you know.
I agree. How does that get presented to us to, to look at those numbers?
I have to do some crunching for you.
Correct.
I've got to take this here and put that into the spreadsheet that I've given you that Mike's got showing. And try to figure out exactly, projecting forward, what, what do we need for Sam and I to get to December? What do we need for, you know, the computers, the town manager, what can we, what can we pull?
The assessor, the, yeah.
That's, you need to figure it with and without your raises.
Right.
Too, correct.
I believe you're entitled to your COLA.
I don't know what COLA is.
Costs a living.
Oh, okay.
And then, Juan, you better go look at your personnel. I think you're entitled to your COLA and anything on top of that was at the discretion of the town manager with approval from the board.
Right, so we have to go back to when I was hired from Neo.
Yeah.
And that was, that was, and I think they have that letter from Patrick that told exactly what Sam and I were.
I have read that letter.
Yeah, we're gonna get, so.
Just.
I don't think I've seen it, but I'm.
Just laying it out.
Whatever it was.
So, and using McDonald's, you know, we need to bring Sam up to a fair.
If you need somebody to cut a tree from the side of the road or anything. It would be about what you're paying the town manager for an hour, truly, we don't pay.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, I was, I'm, I'm still fine with my price, you know? I know what the town situation is, that's, I'm happy being back in town government, so, but yes, we do need to crunch those figures both ways.
So is that something you think you can have ready for next Wednesday?
Mm-hmm.
Without overloading you.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want other things to fall off the table.
Well, you know, we, town manager, I might need to move the tote off the desk. But, um, no, I think I can pull it. I just have to take what I've already done there and just add, double-check the figures and change the figures for you. And then add a few columns and project it out. So it's really maybe a four-hour job, maybe? In between tax payments and stuff, but I do a lot with sending stuff home, like I'll email myself, email myself that spreadsheet and then take this home and fill it in as I'm sitting there watching TV or whatever. Multitasking.
Right, yeah.
I think there are a few other things you need on your warrant. Then I'll get out of your hair.
I have the rough draft that we've. Do you have your draft?
No.
All right, so on the draft, we've already dealt with article four, that's.
Yep.
Those are standard, so we have to go for, and the way I wrote this is because the original budget was this.
Mm-hmm.
And they cut it to this, so I wrote it as reinstating the difference.
Mm-hmm.
Fifty-eight thousand five hundred five.
Fifty-nine, eight twenty-eight.
Mm-hmm.
So now, one thing is that Melissa Getchel caught me tonight and she's like, you have computers. So our computers have been given to us by DeValta. Melissa said that she can actually run all the necessary upgrades and hook them all together.
Thanks.
So, um.
Like volunteer time?
Yeah, that's what I understand, I, we didn't talk price.
I don't know who Melissa is.
Um, she was on the committee with Jeff on the building.
She lives across from Russ and Alice Molton's old house, in that little house that.
Oh, yeah, just saw her a little bit?
Yeah, she works for Harbor Carrot's doing just this.
Yeah.
She's.
Hey, if she's got the talent.
She's gonna stop tomorrow at four-thirty at the office and look at what we have, look at what's been given to us and see what she can do. I mean, we have three fairly new hard drives and I believe they all have Windows eleven on them. We have three new cordless keyboards, dual monitors.
For each one?
For each one.
Except for one, right, there's two sets of duals and one single?
Nope, they're all duals, yep. And the thing is, Jeff's computer has a laptop that goes, this is what S.J. Rollins brought up and set up because his crashed. We could actually move that one to the counter so that we can process at the counter. We don't have to keep messing our stuff up at the desk. So we'll see what Melissa comes up with. We'll see what, you know, does she want a price, does she, you know, is she gonna volunteer the time or, you know, what do we have to do? She even talked about getting an external hard drive to backup our files onto that rather than relying solely on the, um, the one in the corner, the, what's it called?
I don't know, I know what you mean though.
I want to say master, but that's not it.
No, no.
It's the server.
Server.
Server. So we'll see what, see what we have.
Yeah, yeah, quick, can we get those all boarding?
Yeah. And the only reason that we had talked about S.J. Rollins is S.J. Rollins has a computer person that has worked with Trio. So he knows the ins and outs of Trio. That's one of the reasons that Jeff was pushing for S.J. Rollins to be our computer people, so.
There was an overdraft that you probably should just mention.
Um, okay.
It was a hundred and, or a hundred bucks, wasn't much of anything, but technically they have to go in the warrant. Okay, I find it now, I think it was, lights and protection. Nope.
Was it a standalone account?
Yeah. This one, it was the health and sanitation. If this is correct, it was over like a hundred and eighteen bucks, nineteen bucks, nothing, nothing major. You just have to report it to the town when that happens, just means you budgeted well.
And that's, well, we're gonna have a lot in overdrafts by the time we get done this year. So, but that comes out of that fifteen thousand, right? That they appropriate for any overages comes out of that fifteen thousand.
Yep. But this far in the year, I don't know, I mean, you haven't got any idea when you're going to have a.
Audit?
Audit, yeah.
Nope. I emailed them the other day and they are finished, trying to finish up the balancing of the checkbook. And Sam just sent a whole bunch more stuff down to them, which I thought they already had because they've already got part of our audit done, that, that stuff. But we sent it again, so.
And see, normally that's done, that, that, we receive that just before town meeting.
Sometimes.
Normally you would, if you're working through, we had a pre-audit in October, November.
Mm-hmm.
Started sending all the stuff to them because, you know, they need all this stuff and, and they start working through it and then you schedule your audit for like early in January. That way you can have it in February, you can get your, your books printed with the short report in them. You, you know where you stand financially.
Right, because I always, my books closed like January thirty-first and by February, the second week of February, I had an audit under my office going through stuff. I mean, it, it shouldn't be this long.
No, and I don't know why it's this long, I don't know what happened.
Well, part of the problem with the checkbook piece is that stuff was coming in under an email that wasn't coming to the treasurer, so stuff wasn't being put in.
Which is why this is all off.
Yes.
Yeah. It's like, this is wrong.
Yep.
This is bad.
So we, we brushed on the other day.
This being the revenues page in the town report.
Giving them a timeline.
Mm-hmm.
Can we give them a timeline to give, to get this done?
Well, I don't know, I mean, it's not.
I don't think you have much luck with it, you, you can push a little.
Yeah, but I did ask them and they said, as soon as the checkbook's balanced, then the rest should be easy. Well, here it is, almost, it's August tomorrow, I would think by now we should have something more than the rest should be easy. Yeah, so when I did talk to the guy that actually was in our office.
Yeah, I'd never met him before, I mean, I, I met him that day.
Kevin? Oh, yes, yep, Kevin.
We used to have Levi and before that they had somebody they'd had there for many, many, many years, but. So I don't know, I don't know how familiar Kevin is with saying those books, probably not very.
I have no idea.
Yeah.
I haven't heard, Robbie Haley has been in the office, or he called the office. And he doesn't understand why we have to put the vote out to the people to expend the money for the monument to be reworked.
Well, you have to because it's in a reserve account, but it's in a reserve account, it's not in the monument reserve account, it's in the Parks and Rec reserve account.
In the twenty-twenty-two book, it says that it's in the monument reserve.
Read it again, so the veterans came in, they had this money, what do you want to do with it? We want to use it for public good. Well, we could use it for flags and markers at the cemetery, we could redo the monument, we could.
Sanico.
We could move the monument, oh no, we don't want to do that, we want it for. But ultimately, the select board doesn't have to use it for, for one or the other and so it's, the warrant article is a little ambiguous. I think it's in its own.
Thirty-seven thousand, yeah. As long as you stay under this number for the whole entire bucket, you'll be all right.
The, the figure in the book, if you look in twenty-twenty-two book, isn't the right figure in the book.
Right.
It's more like thirty-one thousand.
Twenty-one thousand bucks.
There you go, see, see, it, it has to happen.
Yeah, I should carry a stack with me, to see, right here.
Yep.
Monument law, thirty-seven, five twenty-four, and that's not the right, that's not the right balance.
Nope.
And this isn't even there.
Correct, they spent that.
Oh, we have a separate.
But that is, that was still in my account. It never got moved to the fire department.
No?
No. That's one of the problems that they haven't, is none of this money's been moved around.
Correct, and that's what's supposed to happen at least when you do the audit, if not beforehand.
Should be done as soon as your budget's done.
Well, it should be, but if you don't know how to do, you know. So what we did, we called the auditor and say, how do you want us to set this up? I was not very good at journaling, but they just set it up like this.
I've kind of done them backwards and I've had to go back and undo my.
Yes, yep, so I would always.
Because when negatives are positives.
Uh-huh, I'd always verify first, so, yeah, I don't know why.
But this is messed up.
Yep.
This whole, that whole section.
Oh, I spent a lot of time trying to get it un-messed up.
So, but I am right that we do have to, just like the forty-five thousand, it was a gift, it was accepted, but we have to have permission from the public to spend.
It's, it's sitting in a reserve, so yes.
Okay.
You sure.
Wish that had been done in all of it.
So.
All right, so what else do we have to do?
Well, we've got a thousand other subjects to touch on, but we also got to eat supper.
I was gonna say, eat supper, go to bed, get ready for work tomorrow.
We've got tons of questions on the progress of the town hall, where we stand with that, and I think that this next batch that we just dealt, I think this town manager thing.
That's really.
Our salt sand put up, we, we gotta deal with some of these real-world happening right now problems.
Yep.
Is that what you guys think?
So do you want to wait until your town, until our next board meeting before we put an ad in the newspaper for town manager?
I think we could just look at what you have.
Okay.
And decide if that's appropriate. I don't know if that's a decision we should or shouldn't make in a work session.
You can't take a vote, but as long as you don't see anything glaringly wrong, I mean, you've tasked her with doing this, right?
That's correct.
So as long as you don't have anything.
I think those are unethical.
Yeah, we're just overseeing you, Michelle, it's what we tasked you to do.
Truthfully, you can't do that.
Yeah.
Because you have a select board and you need a town manager, but you don't have a town manager, so you can't.
So I had emailed, emailed or text you, I can't remember what I did with these.
You emailed them.
Okay, so that's what I had come up with. Yeah, I don't have three of them. Yeah, I don't know if there's something that you could think of that I should add to that or. Larry Daggett is also, I got ahold of him and he is going to come speak at the next meeting about those signs. So he'll be part of our agenda. I'm gonna try to set him for like a ten-minute, you have ten minutes to tell the board what they need to do with ATV stuff.
He is the right resource for that project.
So when for some, he had something to say or told me about, like the ATV club, there should be money somewhere, and I'm not clear on what he.
From, from the town's concern, you mean?
Right.
You'd have to go back pretty far to find that.
Really?
Like two thousand thirteen, fourteen.
Oh, really, that far back?
I don't think they've.
Been active or.
Funded anything for them in years.
Okay.
Again, your town report's here.
I've been learning that, I go back to like seventeen. So in this, in this ad, we've not talked anything about what we offer because it's gonna be based per candidate basis is what we, you know, like, we talked about health insurance, no health insurance, things like that. So just keep it generalized is what you've done.
Just, yeah, just give me an application, give me a resume.
One typo.
Hey, that's not bad.
No.
So do you think I've hit the high points? I mean, have you read it Friday?
I did.
I do too.
So I know like on Monday morning, if you're gonna run it in the Eastern Gazette, you've got to have it in there by noon.
Maybe that should be another question, what was the typo in the ad?
Leave the terms if they take out.
You can tell us, you know.
This is a test.
If I remember, one has more qualification, yeah, one back.
Well, Michelle, I, you've been tasked with this, I like what I see.
Okay. So I believe one of you got one of these books.
You gave me one.
Okay, so you guys get, and not, your name's not on the back. Okay, so you guys get, and not, your name's not on the back yet, but these came the other day, so these are yours. You'll get one of those every month?
Yep.
Some more reading for you.
Do you have folders for them? No.
I started with folders. It hasn't been a practice of folders.
Yeah.
From what I can tell.
We used to have them, I just wondered.
I had started folders at one point and that went way by the, by the wayside. Everything I put in it, they didn't want, so.
Oh, well, usually, yeah, usually I'd look and everything I'd given them, they'd throw in the trash.
Actually, in all fairness, whatever I've given them wouldn't fit the folder at this point in time.
I'm like, okay.
Before we, as much as I would love to go eat, um, I would like to brush on the town hall thing a little bit.
Okay.
About. We were only given the, a few things. I would like to know what the, you were part of that town hall committee.
The committee, yeah.
I'd like to see the info that you guys came up with.
Sure.
You know, it, it, you must, she must have it somewhere, huh?
Yep. So all the meetings were recorded and those are available, so you can listen to each meeting in the ground that was covered in them. But as far as, um, the topics that we covered, Dennis Campbell, I believe, has everything. He was actually asking me tonight about it, where we were at with it. I think we need to get the tour with the, with us. And at the same time, we can look at the, the mold situation that we have with our records and our.
The mold's now upstairs. It's up in the first floor.
And we, we need to.
I noticed it today when I went in to get election stuff.
Those books stand solid, are irreplaceable.
I always kind of want to see something on from that. I know you guys had talked about an engineer.
Mm-hmm.
For the foundation stuff. I, I would just.
Yep, we, we got quotations from TC Halford, um, doing an inside pour on it. Some of the quotes we couldn't complete because the previous slide board wouldn't let the contractors in to look at the building. So Nick Crocker wanted to give us a quote as a committee on repairing the brick around the foundation. TC Halford came in and they set up lasers and they shot the whole thing and they gave us a solid price on, on the system that they want to use and they gave us a complete walk-through on what they were gonna do. And everybody on the committee was very impressed with the system that they wanted to use to fix it.
And they are a licensed main engineer?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
They have, their product is used nationwide and it's an engineered system as long as our project fits within the parameters of what their product does.
Okay.
So we did not, we asked them about the engineering stamp on it. There's more to it because this particular building has to keep, to keep its historical value or position or whatever.
Aspects, yeah.
Aspects, good word. Um, the brick need to be repaired and the brick are part of that foundation. So it's not that simple. There's more to it. The system that they're putting in pours on the inside and it's a, it's a steel truss system that's bored into the slab with seven eighths pins. And then it has I-beams that stand up and then they, they put rebar in it. And then they put forms on the outside of the rebar and they, they, they pour the I-beams and rebar right inside the wall. And it's pinned right directly to the concrete slab. That way it can't push in anymore. And then there's a fixture on the top that attaches it to the bottom plate of the building. That system, the, the guy came and explained it to us very clearly and it was, we all really liked that system for the problem that we have. That information is all together in what our committee did and, but we never had any cooperation to go any further with it.
Right.
I mean, we.
Yeah. So I have a box of, and it's all, all of the stuff for that building in my closet. There's, I don't know, plants, I don't know. I put it all so I knew it was safe.
You had the, do you have the folder on the committee findings or does Dennis still have that?
I don't think I've seen it. No.
I'll talk to Dennis.
We also had, part of Jeff's bids that went out were A.G. Callahan and that actually came back. So I emailed the company and told them that, you know, we had sent out bids, wanted to know if they still were interested. They had me fax down everything that we had in the bid package. I'm just waiting for an answer back on them at this point. So then we will have two bids, uh, two prices for two different companies.
Right. So to move forward to what Josh is saying, some of the, our concerns, a lot of people would like to see heat back in the building, which in turn would probably correct the mold problem.
I would hope. Um, I don't know if.
And we may have to have it addressed by a professional.
Yeah, I, I don't know if we need to go back and, and talk to MMA and say, look, we, we're now suffering damage on the inside of the building to the stuff we have in there. You know, is it possible?
It's a storage facility, just like our town garage, and we have insurance on that building.
Right.
And.
So where, where were you when it, when everything took place with the building?
I'd been there three, four months when this guy showed up and said, I'm here to do an audit of all your town buildings. I said, oh, you are? Okay. So we went and looked at all the old, all of the buildings. Town Hall, Public Works, Fire Department, and he dinged us on a few little things at the Fire Department and a little, something at the Public Works, but he had an absolute conniption when he went through the town hall and down cellar. Now, understand that this is a five-year, every five years you have an audit.
Oh, okay.
And he was new.
Oh.
He'd never seen the building before. So he said, this is catastrophic, you know, like catastrophic as in I have to get my staff out of the building now? Or catastrophic as I have to deal with this in X amount of weeks, months, you know, what? But then he's like, well, sooner rather than later and MMA pushed a little bit, went into COVID lockdown. And so nothing was happening and, um, I looked at what we'd spent on the building in the past. I looked at Carpenter's, uh, plan for the building. They'd had a ten-year plan. We'd accomplished most of it in fifteen, spent over five hundred thousand, laid that all out. Had Carpenter's come look at it, had, um, oh, Plymouth.
Plymouth Engineering.
Come look at it. I had Brian Howard come look at it. I dragged anybody I could think of down to look at that. I had some numbers, but, um, what the board wanted to do and what the townspeople wanted to do was constantly.
Two different things.
Two different things.
Now, clarification, the, in 2015, you said we had spent five hundred thousand, but not a year.
It wasn't 2015. In a fifteen-year period, we had spent.
From ninety-two to fifteen.
We'd spent about.
Five hundred thousand.
Five hundred?
Yes.
Thousands that I could document.
That's pretty much what we came up with.
Yeah.
From the ninety-two renovation up through until 2015.
Right.
That's in the neighborhood of what we had come up with.
Yeah. So, and then I pulled some numbers on what it cost to heat it, what it cost to this, that, and the other thing. But the board was pushing very hard to get rid of it. I was in agreement, but was also like, okay, here's my list of people who want to form a committee. Never formed a committee.
Yep.
Some people came in and I pulled together, there should be a folder with everything I pulled together for, um, a couple of members of the town who wanted it. They didn't take the copy, they just took pictures of it. So there should be a copy of all of that stuff. Carpenter's did give us a bid on going through the entire building to let us know what they thought it would cost, but the board didn't want to spend that and it wasn't, it was only four, five thousand dollars, but.
Yeah, I think, I'm not sure who it was, one of the seventy-five hundred.
It's more now, yeah.
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 I mean, it was my, it was, it was peanuts, really, in the whole scheme of things.
Yeah.
So.
One, one of the things we have to be conscious of as a board, in my opinion, and it's my opinion because of what I went through with the other board on this committee, just trying, we all went in with, we wanted to present three options to the town for this town hall thing. And the board had one option they wanted and there was no cooperation to come up with really balanced numbers for the three options. And then as we dug deeper, um, we heard the voice of the town. And the vote that we just had at this last annual town meeting pretty much said what we were hearing. But as a board, I don't think it's up to us to have an agenda. We can have an opinion and put our opinions in with everybody else's. This whole board agenda thing is something I would like to migrate away from.
Yep.
And I think if you'd had a committee early on and explored whatever options were out there.
They were allowed to explore.
All of them. I think you probably would have a different answer than you have today. I mean, I think there are people today who are, I want it this and I want it this way because they've been told they can't have it, you know? And they've been told.
It's just unfortunate. They just, they never finish what they started.
We, we thought in the beginning that if we put balanced numbers, it would be in the wrong.
Started this, we're gonna do this.
We thought this committee.
Well, you have Robinsons, you've got the Abby Fowler lot. There's an issue you could deal with if you ever had the time. Speaking of that.
Let's, let's stop right there for two seconds.
Because Brian sent an email, evidently something has happened on that lot. He's willing, he is giving the town first refusal on purchasing that section back. I think it was ninety-five thousand.
Okay, here's the deal. Go look at your deed because there was, he was required to improve that lot within such and such a timeframe or the town could take it back. I don't know that tearing down the building counts as improvement. Could give you some legal room as terms of, he paid a dollar for that lot.
I thought with the agreement that he tore the building down.
No, with the agreement that he turned it into a taxable property, that he improved it. He, he had three or four different ideas that turned out to not really be feasible and then turned, then tore it down.
So we've got.
So there was a contract when that happened?
And there's a timeframe and you're, I think you're pushing out to the end of the timeframe where he's free and clear to do whatever the heck he wants.
Can you find that info for us, Michelle?
I will. All I have to do is pull the deed off from the registry of deeds.
It's, it's written right into the deed?
Okay. So that'll be fast. But at one point, I think he offered also to build a building on that lot for us if we so desired.
We never saw that as a committee.
I never saw it in writing. I, I, I just was told that.
Do you know when he took, um, possession of the lot?
Oh, it was on the committee.
A while ago now.
It is.
Your father was on the committee. Um, Toby Hall, I'm thinking like 2018, is that?
Yeah, if you pull up town of Sangaville in the, uh, on the registry of deeds.
I should be able to find it.
You should be able to find it. He, the deed is not in his name, it's in like Abby Fowler something Corporation is.
Okay.
Someone they're looking for. Don't look under Brian.
Okay.
I might have it somewhere.
I don't know. I found a big book about Abby Fowler, but it's in the safe at the.
Oh, yeah, that they're huge, that's all about, probably about the remediation. Cause it had to be remediated before they could sell it.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure. I think I remember that being done.
And then just recently, I'm not sure if you were on the board yet, they had to sign off on something that had been done for many, many years that had something to do with Abby Fowler.
I remember listening to that in a meeting, but I don't.
No, I think that was pre-me, though.
Okay, I, I, I heard it in the minutes or something, but.
Do you have any more questions on that?
I think step one on this town hall thing is to push this walkthrough that we are talking about forward as far as we can. Look at the mold problem, the storage problem. If we don't do anything with the building, we need to do something with our records.
Mm-hmm.
And it's up to us to do that.
Right. I guess, did, have, our insurance is MMA.
Mm-hmm.
Have you ever talked to them directly?
I never have.
Because, I mean.
Lance talked to them once an hour, committee. He's the only one that was authorized to.
I guess I just can't wrap my mind around why we have a whole lot of qualified, qualified, qualified. There's a lot of qualified. There's no, we need an engineer till we get to the foundation. Why exactly were we not, we, but the last board, saying when, when we have the report right here that says we only need qualified people for most of it? Why can't we get somebody qualified in there if that's what our report is saying?
The problem that we ran into is when it is done, an engineer has to walk through this building and he has to stamp his license on the occupancy permit for the building. And if we hire a qualified person to do the repair and him and the engineer do not see eye to eye on the subject, we've wasted our money. So if you have an engineering firm oversee the project, then each step of the way, it's, um, signed off. That engineer has to sign, now, if we were still in the building and doing this as repairs, what you're saying is absolutely valid.
Right, like the cellar stairs needed a railing. I just hired somebody local to put up a railing. Took pictures of it, sent it back to MMA, all good.
Done.
Done.
But now, at the end of that project, an engineer has to walk in and he has to put his license right on the line for every single thing that was done because it's not occupied. They, they, once we moved out of it, it changed the picture a lot.
And they gave us a lot of time, extra time due to COVID. We would have been out much sooner if.
So is that gonna draw the cost up from what the committee had came up with? Cause we.
We can't, we, we will not know that until we have an engineer give us an idea and that's where we're at right now.
Okay.
And you've got two firms offering to do that, right?
We have one.
I have one right now that has, has given his price.
And Carpenter's won't even talk to us anymore.
No, Carpenter's won't talk to us.
I can understand why.
That answers a lot of my questions anyway, I guess.
But the reason why is we moved out, now, now we need.
Cause we weren't out in twenty-two when this was made. We were in. So the smart thing to do then would have been to do all the qualified stuff then, but.
The smart thing to have done would be to do maintenance or go to the people and see if they wanted to do something different.
Okay.
So what or when did they move out?
Late twenty-two, October of twenty-two, is that?
I thought it was June, July.
Maybe.
I thought it was last year.
No, it's been two years.
No, it's been two years.
It's been two years, huh?
So what was the driving force there? Did MMA drive you out of that building?
They canceled the insurance.
Okay.
Well, this is, this year is June fourteenth of twenty-two.
Okay.
Right, I think that was right in the timeframe, right there. The, the thing that upset the people of the town of Sangaville is that decision to move out of that building should have been a decision by the people and there should have been all the education to go with it so they can make a good decision. That's what the people are upset about. They didn't get to make that choice.
At that point, you had to have the, the choice, they should have been working on it. I think if you'd been working on it and showed any kind of progress.
Right. They never knew, the people. They never knew, the people did not know.
I understand, would still be in the building if...
That's correct.
Yeah.
And it would be, just like you said, authorized person to come in and fix this, you know, somebody...
So this never went to the public at all, as far as knowing we have issues?
There were a couple workshops. We had one Town Meeting, we had a warrant article as a discussion article, and where everybody discussed it. And as you can imagine, there were people who, we've got to save this grand old building. Most of those don't even live in town. There were the people of like, ah, don't do anything, we'll, when it gets real bad, we'll deal with it. And there were people with, okay, we gotta get on this, we gotta do this now, you know, or, and then there were even a couple of like, yeah, let's junk it, let's move. But there was no consensus. Again, that's when I took down names for people who wanted to be on a committee, and the committee was never formed.
So I guess there is one more question, it's probably multi-parted. We earmarked $440,000, correct?
Right.
With Town approved?
Right.
For that building?
Mm-hmm.
Now, we find out that it's gonna be way more than that, say?
Mm-hmm.
Where, what happens with the $440,000?
So the $440,000 is, the $440,000 is still in our account. It's just got tagged on a reserve for the, for the Town Hall. You don't think so?
Don't think so. So you want to, you want to make sure you word it in an article and...
Okay. So how do you view that?
A view that you have it now, and you are going to do your assessments and...
Engineering studies.
Engineering studies, and I'd have to read it again, but did it say that if, if you couldn't...
It comes with the book.
If you couldn't, well, I've got it right in front of me. If you can't fix it for that $440,000 that you're done, does it say that?
No, what it says...
No, but they've, they've already voted on the $440,000 in Town Meeting.
Correct. But again, if you don't spend it, it rolls to the general fund.
Now, why? I hear that all the time, so...
That has to do with wording, so that's what we're...
So there's no wording anywhere, it says, it says carry forward or carry...
That's what I'm wondering, is why isn't this, if it's earmarked?
They're now death on carry forwarding, and that's something another bad board did. Um, where is it?
It's the second blast.
Here it is. To see if inhabitants of Sangaville may will authorize the town to allocate up to $440,000 from the town's reserve funds. See, that's not accurate.
I think they meant general fund.
Right, that's general fund.
Which is part of that CD that was in the main highlights.
No, that CD was, well, parts, parts of the money in there were in the general fund. Parts of, it could be, that was your cash flow that you had all tied up, not necessarily any specific money. So your reserves could have been in there, your, you see what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
And they would have been earning interest, so that would, that's another...
Yeah, well...
That's another, okay.
That didn't lose, didn't gain any interest.
With a one-year goal, the renovations will be focused on obtaining municipal fire hazard and liability insurance number seven, use of the first floor of Town Office voting, place and community meeting place.
And they struck the rest of it off in the article.
Yeah. To allocate up to $440,000. So you have up to $440,000 to be used to do renovations to the town building. But I believe if you don't spend that...
Then it has to go back.
Then you just have to put another article in saying that we roll what we didn't spend forward, or we want to roll what we didn't spend forward plus X number of dollars to do this, or, oh, it's gonna be twice as much as we thought, we aren't going to roll that forward, we're just going to start looking at other things.
And now that this has been approved, if it is that way, later on, we gotta start back over from scratch, right?
Well, a year from now, you've got to reintroduce the article.
Yeah, you've got to, yeah, say, okay, we spent $100,000 on engineering surveys, this is what needs to be done. Okay, let's roll forward that $340,000 to start doing that.
Right, but I mean, like, say it's gonna, say it costs a million dollars.
Yep.
And the town says, no.
Right.
We're not putting that money.
You're done.
So then we gotta step way back, and we still got issues that we don't have Town Office.
Right, so then you either, so we're not gonna, if you're not gonna fix that building, what are you gonna do? And you'd have to have an article?
They reversed back the plan, we started...
Right, well, that's...
...a lengthy phases.
I didn't know if where it had been voted on and passed, okay, no matter what, in the end, that's the only option we have. So, okay.
No.
So the $440,000, though, has to be spent in this fiscal year?
That's my understanding.
And at the end of the year, any unsaid balances go into the general fund?
Just rolls, yeah.
Just rolls, okay.
Then you'd have to have a new article at the new Town Meeting to roll it forward for another year.
Right. It's sort of like the appropriation for Josh. We agreed to it, but the bill came in the next fiscal year, and so they had to appropriate it out of the general fund. Had it, you'd raised it the year before, you just had to appropriate it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
I know.
I know what you're thinking.
It's as clear as mud.
Yeah. So, so it's my interpretation that we've put this out to the engineers, this, this Town Hall thing.
Mm-hmm.
The people have voted on this right here. Step one is to obtain engineering and a cost of the project.
Right.
And at that point, the responsible thing to do would be to take all that to the people and say, this is where we are at. Are we gonna spend the money? Are we going to do a bond for this? Are we going to, or are we not gonna do it at all?
But we can hire, correct me if I'm wrong, we can hire an engineer. The Board has the authority to hire one of those two engineers, and then get the results back, and then we go to the town.
You know, and if they said, hey, we've spent $100,000 on this engineering survey, it's only gonna take you $200,000 to get back in that building. If I were you, I'd keep right on moving and get back in that big building, you know, I mean, I don't believe that's likely, but, you know, if that's...
We have, from one of the firms, we have an engineering cost.
Yeah.
That's been sent us.
It's like $41,000 something.
$41,000 to engineer the project. So, do we, do we prioritize this and move it to...
The next phase?
A next Selectman's Meeting and, and authorize these people to move forward?
Do you want me to contact the other company and see where they stand if they're gonna bid or put something together? Okay.
What you're saying is it's gonna cost $41,000 for them to give us a price.
Mm-hmm.
To give you an engineering study, and they should give us a...
That's not, that's to bolts or nails to whatever, I mean, that's...
That is just the engineering.
No, it's, oh, it's not materials and it's not laying the whole thing out?
This is laying the whole thing out, but the $40,000 is nothing but...
Right.
Engineering study.
And that...
But we need that.
And that, yeah, and that study will say it's going to cost you...
Well, I think we're in the wrong business.
Should be an engineer?
Should have paid attention in school.
Yeah.
Charlie Miller was onto something.
Yeah, but he was teaching schools.
Here we are, giving quotes for free, and they're giving $41,000 for it.
So, on our next agenda, do you, do you guys want to introduce this on our next agenda, this engineering thing? Do you think you can have an answer from the other company?
Yeah, I'll call them tomorrow morning.
You get started, one way or the other.
I've been quizzed about this quite a few times, and we need to make this ball roll.
Yeah.
And we either need to, okay, here's where we're at, and we're not gonna do it, we're gonna do something different, but it's gonna cost us $40,000 to get there.
Yeah.
My interpretation, from reading the Town and being very, very involved with that Committee, we're moving forward to the Town Hall.
Right.
And...
And get a final price as to what they think is gonna...
For us to have an agenda is wrong. We need to, whatever, whatever the people say to do is what we're supposed to be doing.
Right, correct.
We're representing...
I, I've just been asking some of the questions, just because I wanna make sure that how we go about it is, we aren't gonna get ourselves in trouble later on because we went too far, didn't go far enough for, you know...
I think, reading this right here, we owe it to the people to move forward to the engineering study as soon as possible.
We stalled out everywhere.
See, the previous, the previous Board was into, forget that. And I was elected as part of that Board, but I didn't have a voice.
Right.
We now have a voice, and we need to represent the voice of the people.
Yeah. And I mean, I know it's gonna make, the next meeting is gonna be a long one, but...
It's okay.
I think that, that things we need to...
I think a few of them for a while are gonna be long. Sorry, guys.
Yeah, and often.
Yeah, yeah. But it has to be done, that's the only way you're gonna fix what you've got, so...
That really, if, if, if we got through what we've talked about tonight and started this ball rolling on the Town Hall, that takes our pile and brings it right down to manageable, I think.
Right.
We got tons of us, stupid little things, but that can be accomplished in a meeting, you know?
Right.
This is all stuff that we've got.
These are big ticket items, right.
This Fire Department thing is put to bed, it's done, it's over with, and we need to just approach all these big-ticket things the same way.
You ordered air packs?
They're done, they're ordered.
At a cheaper price, too? You know you need a Town Manager for that?
Yeah.
Just saying, going forward, Town Manager should be the person ordering.
Well, but we're in a catch-22 right now, so...
I, I totally agree. Totally agree. I'm just, just saying that down the road, you might find issues. The Fire Department cannot make its own purchases.
That's right.
Right, everything comes through our office, everything. Purchase orders are done out of our office.
Right. Because you don't, you don't wanna discover that...
Yeah.
This bill hits your desk and it's like, yeah.
We've had that happen.
When we discussed this with the Fire Department, they are simply following the outline that they were given. Matt, Matt followed through with Tabitha and Stephen King.
This is the second time they've gotten them.
And ordered exactly what was in that contract with them.
Yeah.
And used the fact that we spent that money, and he negotiated the price of the air packs down and brought it to us. So we ended up saving, I think we paid 30...
Almost $4,000 you saved.
Yeah, 30...
Right? $3,600, something like that.
Okay, here's, here's an idea. You can take next year the money you saved and put it in their reserve, or roll it somehow so that they get the benefit of it.
So my question is, we earlier discussed, we have a shortfall in their department, in their wages.
You can't take it out.
But that can be taken out and put there. They would have to go into next year.
You could next year use that $10,000 in the reserve, because I think it only says Fire Department Reserve. You used to have a problem, you had a fire truck reserve, and a Fire Department Building Fund, and a Fire Department something else. And so you had to be very careful which one you pulled monies out of, because you could only do building work with a building fund. This money was only for a new truck, and then you had to...
If it was Fire Department capital equipment...
Capital, just capital reserve.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're, you're better off.
Then if you have something happen, then you've got monies that you can tackle.
But the idea is you're building that reserve, and you're building that reserve for new truck, new equipment, new, new big capital expenses, and you don't want to use it to fix your budget shortfall. You want to budget better.
Yeah, yeah.
Makes sense.
I think we've covered a lot of ground.
So just run down quickly what we're gonna do in our next meeting.
Next meeting, hold on.
Oh, I thought you only had a page in the night, you flipped one I didn't see.
Okay, so assessing is one of our projects. Budget Committee, a Row Town Meeting.
You have to get a warrant ready at some point.
Yeah. Okay, so that was, that's not, I'm thinking a year. Warrant now. Flanders Hill, Salt Sand, Chris put the Salt Sand up. That's all about Salt Sand. The dam. The bank is on the low side of things, so we're just not gonna worry about that. Town Manager, computers, Larry Daggett, Town Hall. And then this is just follow, follow through the Town Hall.
Big meeting coming.
Yeah. So what do you guys think? If we have her just make an agenda, she can send it to us, we can study it, and if we want to modify it, then we can let her know what we think. There's a lot to cover there.
You can modify it at any time, you know? You can get to the meeting and say, this came up, we're adding this.
You can just table, table off.
You can table stuff, you can add stuff. People get cranky when you add stuff, but sometimes it happens. I mean, sometimes you get...